... under God, in the world of liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. George, if you would, please, roll call.
Sure. Cindy Charney. Chuck Lewis. Charles Fisher.
Here.
Joseph Shaw.
Here.
Greg Trader. Dan Van Wick. Alex Rodriguez. And myself, George Needles, present.
Okay. I have a motion for approval of the minutes from the March Planning Commission meeting. All in favor? Hi.
Aye.
Approved. Thank you very much. We have one presentation on the agenda tonight, 801 Bethel Avenue. Matt, are you going to be making the presentation? Introduce yourself and explain what your project is.
Good evening, my name is Matthew Hoopman, professional engineer with the firm of G D Hoopman Sun Media. We were retained by the applicant to prepare land development plans. The applicant, John Mullin, who is C A M, Gulf Enterprise L C, is out of town tonight. He's in Florida. We apologize for not being here, but I can handle the present. The property address is 401 Bethel Avenue. It's approximately a one acre site. See if the plan comes up on the screen. All right, this is the existing conditions plan, which is part of the land development plan set. The property is located on the north side of Bethel Avenue, more or less opposite Jefferson Street, which is shown here on the lower right portion of the plan. The rear of the property backs up to Route 322, Conchester Highway, and again fronts on Bethel Avenue. The property is approximately 290 feet of frontage along Bethel Avenue and is approximately 190 feet deep. There is an existing home on the property that favors the southeast corner. We're looking at the plans that front right side. Also, a significant feature on the site is there is a tributary to the Marcus Hook Creek, which runs east-west toward the rear third of the property. Property gently slopes from Bethel Road in a north-to-northwestly direction toward the stream. On the opposite side of the stream, the grade rises about 10 feet from the stream elevation up and back into Route 322. The property is Zone C1. And what is proposed is a tradesman shop. And Jasmine, if you could build a sheet one. Yeah, that's fine, thank you. So what is proposed? Proposed, again, is a tradesman shop. Structure here located to the west or left of the existing dwelling. It has a 50 by 50-foot area, which would be used for storage or assembly, and a 20 by 24-foot, in all likelihood, office off to the west side. The proposed entrance is approximately along the midpoint of the frontage on Bethel Avenue to the west of the existing dwelling. There's not, one of the parameters with this site, it's not an overly large site, and it's further confined by Bethel Road to the south and the riparian buffer, which is measured off the existing stream to the north. The proposed parking is primarily in between the two buildings, along the east side of the proposed building and then back behind the existing structure. The, as far as the existing building, the first floor of the dwelling is proposed to be converted into office space with a similar use to the proposed building. The land development does include road widening of Bethel Avenue, 18 feet from center line, I believe is required, proposed, and also sidewalk along the frontage. And the proposed curb line along the frontage of the property will tie into some curb of the adjoining property immediately to the west. And Jasmine, maybe sheet three, if you could? Okay, sheet three is the grading plan. And the infill rectangle there under the parking area is the stormwater management system. It'll collect runoff from the proposed parking area and the proposed building. It will infiltrate whatever water it can and then manage the remainder. And the release point for the bed would be out toward the stream in the back. So that's a very quick overview of what's proposed. We have seen reviews by the township professionals, township engineer, township planning consultant, and the zoning officer. This is the planning commission. I can go through the township engineer's review.
Excuse me, Alex, is that all right with you? All right, so what we're going to do then, Matt, is let you and Alex kind of interact if need be, and then the planning commission will interject any questions that might arise as you're going through it.
Very good. Under land development ordinance, first comment is to locate existing sanitary stores, storm sewers, wear lines, and fire hydrants within 20, I'm sorry, 200 feet of the site. I believe we show the information immediately adjacent to the site. We'll expand our investigation and add the requested information. Item two, E N S plans shall be submitted to the county conservation district. Alex, I guess, I ask, do they need to go even if there's less than an acre of disturbance?
Okay.
That's fine, then we'll send a copy over to the conservation. Item three, the nearest fire hydrant must be shown, and the closest fire hydrant is greater than 600 feet, then the proposed fire hydrant must be stored under pieces specified by the fire marshal. Now, I look on Google Earth today, and the closest fire hydrant to the east is, I think, opposite Ruth Street or Ruth Avenue, and it was about 700 feet away. To the west, there's a fire hydrant on the north side of Bethel Avenue, and it's about 800 feet away. But to the south, I believe it was at the intersection of Jefferson and that cross street down this area here, there's a fire hydrant, and it's about 550 feet away. So I don't know if we have to talk to the fire marshal about that, but there is a fire hydrant within 600 feet. It's not along Bethel Road, it's down into the development to the south of the project. So it actually had to cross over.
Yeah. Bethel, if you were to have some need to hook up. Right, okay.
Item four, a minimum of one tree shall be planted in front yard of each lot. That's no problem, we comply. Recreation, open space, or fee in lieu of, I'm sure the applicant's proposed fee in lieu of, and we will comply. Curb shall be setback 18 feet from the center line of the collector road. We are showing curb. Might be hard to find on the plan because it just so happens the curb line is very close to the existing. And the proposed sidewalk along Bethel Avenue should be a minimum of five feet with PennDOT standards. And a PennDOT H O P will be required. We acknowledge that, and we'll have to make application. In terms of stormwater, item eight is, I believe, our calculations handle the proposed furby's coverage, but a reminder that I guess we have to address the disturbed area going from the meadow or woods condition to lawn. It doesn't generate a whole lot of extra stormwater, but it does generate some, so we'll have to adjust our. Nine is to address stream bank erosion requirements, which we will comply with. Ten is to install a cutoff trench at the outlet pipe to prevent water running along the outside of the pipe, and that's a full detail that Alex asked for, and we will add that to the plan. Item 11 is to add an outlet structure just for the outfall pipe, so that we have an inlet here in the middle of the bed, our outfall. And what Alex is looking for is that, is another structure probably on the edge of the bed, which would be, that would be the point of our office control, rather than the structure right in the bed. Twelve is a comment about looking at up slope drainage area and contours, and we'll address that in the plan. Item 13, we had different sizes of the proposed seepage bed between our caps and the plan. I believe the calculations is correct, the larger bed, and that bed might need to be a little bit larger. Previous comments. Outlet structure detail must be provided, we'll comply. We have not done infiltration testing yet of the stormwater system. That's going to be scheduled for mid to late next week, and we'll contact the engineer's office to schedule that. Turning to second page, traffic posted speed limit should be noted on the plan. It's 25 miles per hour in that stretch, and we'll add that note to the plan. Seventeen, the existing driveway should be clearly noted to be removed. There's an existing driveway here at the far southeast corner of the site. And I have to coordinate with my client on exactly what he's going to do. I think he's allowed to use residential in the second floor of that building. We'll have to double check that, and if he does, he may want to keep these two spaces for the residential unit. The commission has any comment on that, but that needs further coordination on our part, too, for the other.
So, I know you were talking about putting in possibly an office on the west side, was it, of the building?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, and so what purpose?
Oh, and convert the first floor of this building to office space.
Okay, I didn't hear that before. So it's up in the air as to whether or not you're going to renovate or make the second floor available for residential use?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, we'll have to. And eighteen, truck turning plans must be provided. In terms of general comments, nineteen, a landscaping plan. I don't even think we shared anything on landscaping, so we'll have to update our plan to do that. We had a wrong building dimension. We had 50 feet here dimensioned and 70 along this side, but that's incorrect. It's a 50, this main portion of the proposed structure is 50 by 50, 20 by 24 appendage to this. We will provide a lighting plan. Item 22 is probably a important comment in terms of in design. The required right-of-way line should be provided along Bethel Avenue for at least five feet behind face per, due to the road widening. An easement should be provided for the sidewalk. I believe we have the easement on. Secondly, on item 23, the front yard building stepback line must be measured from the required, or I guess maybe ultimate right-of-way line there, Alex. The existing legal right-of-way and the required right-of-way lines must be clearly measured. Now, the front yard setback, I believe, is 45 cantonous district, and that's where we set the front face of the building. And if you notice, the back of the building is very close to the riparian buffer. And I think we even have just a little bit of grading that might even touch the riparian buffer. So we're very, very narrow in front and back because of this stream and associated riparian buffer in the rear. What we would like to do is provide the required zoning 45-foot front setback from the legal right-of-way line of Bethel Avenue, not the ultimate right-of-way line. And I believe that would require a waiver from the subdivision land development. If we had the room, we would gladly accommodated that, but again, it was very limited from north to south of the site. Now, I looked, today I looked at Google Earth again, and there's four or so houses on the south side of the roadway. And the distance, not from the right-of-way line, I used the center line just for comparison purposes. Those houses were anywhere from 33 to 40 feet from the center line of Bethel Avenue to the front face of the buildings. And we are going to be 45 plus additional 16, so we're about 61, 62 feet. So this building is going to sit back significantly further than the four buildings across the street. If you look at the next building to the west, that building sits back a little further, probably about 73 feet, but then there's other commercial buildings on the next to see property, just like the other buildings. And there, again, they're about 30 to, as I recall, about 45 feet from the center line of the road. Again, we're going to be about 65. So if you look at all the areas, especially to the south and to the west, our building's going to sit back further than the existing building. So it's not, it's not like if this waiver was granted, this building would look hot and stick out closer to the road than the surrounding properties. Even if we're granted that waiver, we're going to be further back than. Twenty-four is parking. What we did is, we looked at parking for two different possibilities. One, there wasn't an exact match for a tradesman shop in the ordinance, but there was one for, I think it was a cabinet makerie or something of that sort, and it was one for 300 feet of floor area. If you do that calculation for these structures, we would have required 12.4 parking spaces. The other way we looked at it is we took the first floor of the existing building in this appendage and considered them office at one space for 200 square feet, and then looked at this 50 by 50-foot structure as light assembly or similar, and it was one space for 750 square feet plus one for each employee. And if you do the math and assume there's three employees back in this area, it came up to like 12 and a half spaces again. So it looked like 13 spaces were required, and we are proposing 17. I know in Charlie Romali's review, he said that 20 spaces are required. I think he may be using one for 200 for the entire floor area. I mean, it is his call, he's the zoning officer, right? I'm going to have a discussion with him and explain our rationale and see if he may not agree with our position. Item 25, ADA stalls for each building. One for the office, the office building, the existing structure, one for the proposed. I'll just make a double check. I mean, we can provide them, but I'll just double check. That's, if that's what's required, I guess it is. I don't know, Alex, I'll talk to you offline. All doors, the locations for the proposed building should be delineated. This is another item discussion with the planning commission. Right now, for this area, I think what's going to be proposed is like a garage door, vehicle door, two of them, one toward the back and one toward the front. We have spaces there, too, but it's not like entry into those buildings by some kind of vehicle is going to be an everyday occurrence. It's probably going to be only occasionally, and we'd still like to count the parking spaces in front of that. That's a problem, we're going to have to find our spaces somewhere else. We might actually even have to move the building a little bit to the west to create more spaces back behind the existing building. Again, if the planning commission or Alex has any comment about that, we'd like to iron that out so we can adjust the plan accordingly. Hopefully, we're okay the way we've had it proposed, but again, I know. Item 28 is sidewalk in front of the building must be wide enough to provide ADA accessibility. We'll comply. And I believe the rest of the comments are just reminders of the third party permits. We need to have planning microapproval and get sewer capacity. We need a letter from the water company. Thirty-two is the trash enclosure, which I guess would either be here or maybe down there. Again, probably not going to be, I shouldn't say that, the use might generate a decent amount of trash, but we will, we'll try to pick the best spot and indicate. And loading zone, we're considering this paving along the south side of the building as the loading zone, and it would meet the requirements of 12 by 50 foot. Lastly, you know, again, a note on the plan, we do have a note on the plan that PennDOT I went through those comments a little bit quickly, but I think we addressed them all. We're not looking for any decisions from the planning commission tonight. We do have some planned revisions to make. We'd be happy to receive feedback from the planning. I know Matt mentioned number seven.
Number seven had to do with the five-foot wide sidewalk. I think on the plans, what weren't, or didn't you list it as four-foot wide?
It's funny, on our first page it's listed as five, on the other sheets it lists it as four. And I don't know if we updated the first plan.
Okay.
Or not, but we're going to make them five feet.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
I have a question. Forgive my inexperience, but what is a tradesman shop?
It could be something like, it could be anything, well, let's say, a contractor that needs specialized in bathroom kitchen renovations and uses the front of the office and a storage area for his material equipment. It could be cabinet maker, it could be an HVAC guy who again uses the office and the areas to store, and it would be light assembly of this HVAC equipment. So any of the trades where they need an office in front of their business, where they more importantly need a little more space for material storage and storing the other way to go to a job, bring around a job.
And given that, you were talking about the doors and potential parking space issues. So what kind of doors are you envisioning? Wall-up doors?
Yeah, all of those.
Is it be necessary, I guess, to be able to get larger with materials in?
Correct, yes. Doesn't make sense to me, though, as if you're going to have the front. I don't know. Yeah. Manhole holes in the front. And then something around maybe from the back, or I guess from the side or from the back, you would have an area where the. I think, I think the front of the building would still be along the south face. For this area, the office, probably another manhole here, so I know Thomas will have to show. I think that's, that's the pedestrian access.
Yeah, but I thought you said you have.
That's. Yeah.
So you're, so, so the front, I mean, I was, I was thinking at the front entrance. The street side.
Yeah, yeah.
And just to confirm, the existing structure will stay? And the proposing first floor for office space and potentially residential on the second floor?
Correct.
Also, the bottom of the building, dumpster. So you mean the buildings and then like the residential?
I think one, trash location for all the commercial uses. And I really didn't give much thought about the residential, whether they participate in that or just put it back out on the street. Maybe we'd be looking for the township to correct. I can discuss that with my.
Johnny, I think you kind of laid the answer, probably still here. Totally could.
The minimum side door is 10 feet.
Okay.
The last. And then we, the requirement. What's this? How? I don't know, the building is. I just try to situate that building so that we don't have a conflict. The zoning officer, but it would try to, you know, be clear that you, the zoning officer.
We might prefer a waiver request than an advance request.
I don't think so.
I don't think so. I mean, I understand what you're saying, but I don't, if the waiver's granted, I don't think that has any zoning implications. But it does, I understand what you're saying about the intent was to keep. But that's why, that's why I looked at all the existing, the existing properties probably came off the legal right-of-way, or maybe the front yard at that time is not as much, because again, all the structures across the street and the structures to the west are all very much closer than the proposed building.
Well, a little stream, but. A little bit, though, we're still, that's the pinch point right there with the riparian buffer, so. The most, I'd have to shift it further than this dimension right here to get past there. And I can't be 10 feet from that property, man. I need to work with drainage and everything else. We'll look at it, we'll take a look.
Matt, with the driveway and the parking spaces, what you mentioned in here about the drainage, it seems to be sloping through that?
Yeah.
All right. I can't tell from there, but what's the slope and everything right there?
Oh, it's, it's gently sloping, I forget exactly what it is. It might be 5% slope through here, maybe four to 5%.
Yeah, I was just thinking about ice and stuff in the winter. Okay.
Should be a problem. We have curb, we have curb along the back here to capture the water, so that directs the water back into the. the water back into the. Signage. I don't think the advocates, uh, it's focused on signage yet. I guess when the time comes we'll have to apply for a zoning permit for. I don't think so, no. I think it's going to be modest, very modest. Could, could be. Oh, yes, that, we really didn't discuss that.
All right, so you're talking about placing a dumpster on the side of the building that's facing the road?
Well, it's, it's, I mean logically, in terms of just maneuvering, where it would make sense is here or over here. Here's better screen from the, from the highway. Maybe if we move things over, we get enough room to put it back.
That's one biggest worry, because if you stand in front of the building, and you have contractors dumping the trash out there, there's going to be crap over, it's just going to be seen from the road. Got to be a similar configuration.
Right. Well, then, maybe, maybe we'll put it back here. We could always plant some, some evergreens to screen it. That would seem to be a nice spot.
The other thing, Matt, and I think I mentioned this when you were going through the, the issues, and that was, I don't know what the fire marshal is going to finally say or something here when he concurs with where these fire hydrants that you were able to locate on Kukou maps are, and whether it's five hundred and fifty feet to the closest one, so it's inside the six hundred feet. Uh, I really don't feel comfortable with going across Bethel to, to get access to a fire hydrant. I mean, to me, that just seems like it's just fraught with all kinds of problems, especially, I mean, unnecessarily stopping traffic if you had to stop traffic or anything else like that. It just seems like a fire hydrant's probably more likely than not necessary.
That line across the road, now you're restricting any other emergency vehicles from getting.
Yeah.
Past that point.
I guess fire marshal ultimately makes that call.
Yeah.
I'm assuming that he's going to comment for sure, one way or the other. Yeah.
Just in the best interest of even the neighborhood perhaps.
Joe, you got a little experience in that, don't you?
Mine's more industrial.
Nevertheless.
And I have to walk that road. I don't.
It's.
I'm sorry.
No, continue.
It was Google Earth I was looking at, so I, I like to walk the road and make sure I didn't miss one.
Google Earth, you might find that when you actually, like, it's actually measured out, it's, you know, five fifty to six hundred's pretty close. I don't know how, you know, how accurate that is.
I was expecting to see one maybe at this intersection of Jefferson and Bethel, but there's not. But again, I'll walk the road and make sure that there's no, no hydrants in between the two that I spotted, you know, seven hundred feet to the east or eight hundred feet to the west. Here? Yes. Well, we should. Yeah, right, this, this line right here and that line right there are the right-of-way lines, and then these lines inside are the edge of cartway.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah. Um, I, I was listening to your answer to what Cindy asked about the, the tradesman shop and the reason for it. Will there be any manufacturing done there?
Well, certainly not heavy manufacturing. And I, no, I would say no manufacturing. If anything, it's just assembly. And I, I don't know, I think there's a slight difference there.
Is that going to be spelled out in the usage?
We can't.
Yeah, a couple of things too. The loading dock, is it possible to, would you, could you consider putting a loading dock to the rear of the building, uh, that's between the, the building and three twenty-two? And I'm asking this for, to, to have a, more of a buffer for, uh, noise from the, the neighbors across Bethel?
Right. We, we'd have to, I mean, we'd have to have some pavement to, to get a vehicle to make the turn and come in. And I think to try to do that, we would be, we'd probably be right into the creek to attempt.
Well, um, so, the, there was a, a proposal that you moved the building ten feet to the west?
Yes.
So if you were to move the building ten feet to the west, would that not give you more space for a loading dock between the rear of the building and the creek?
Uh, I mean, we might be looking at the edge of building, maybe somewhere here, and come over to about there, I'm guessing. You, you'd still have to be, you know, you'd still have to be, in my opinion, too close to the stream, if not encroaching the stream to make that vehicle movement.
And so the purpose is to get, have less noise.
I understand, yeah.
The loading and unloading of, of these vehicles, from the, you know, the impact to the neighbors across the building. Um, the creek itself, uh, what would be the impact of your, of any operations on the creek? Any runoff into the creek, or, and you meant to talk about a buffer?
Yeah, right, riparian buffer, uh, I forget what it is, is thirty-five, thirty, twenty-five or thirty-five feet from the stream. You, you're not supposed to have any structures naturally in there. Uh, sometimes you can do some minor regrading as long as you return it back to a riparian type environment. Uh, but in terms of impact, the runoff from the site goes into the seepage bed, the initial rainfall amounts, uh, hopefully will percolate through the soil. Uh, excess will be managed and released back to the stream. Uh, so.
So you, you mentioned that the, that the, there's a grade that slopes down towards the creek.
Right.
From, uh, the building itself.
Right, from Bethel.
So are you going to build up, um, you know, the area around the building, and then put some kind of barrier there in the case you have like a spill from a truck or something like that to keep gas or oil from possibly seeping into the creek?
There's going to be a curb all along this edge of pavement, so water will not be able to run off the parking area into the stream. It's going to actually get into this bed. And the way the bed's designed is, uh, there'll be a pipe leaving the bed, but the bottom of the bed is lower than that pipe. So any, any, let's say you have a little spill, uh, that's going to get trapped at the bottom of the bed and in the inlet, which you could hopefully recover and won't need it to.
So I don't see anything in your plans to the, the west and to the, what's this side up here between the building and the creek? What is that, the north side?
North side here?
So I don't see anything in your plans between the west side and, and the north side to keep any spills from a truck, uh, spilling its gas or oil or whatever from seeping down into the creek?
Well, the, um, if, if, if there is a vehicle in here, it's going, you know, since the doors are.
Well, everything, everything to the west is supposed to be your loading dock. So that's where your, those tractor trails are going to come into.
And then, no, they enter the building along this face, the east.
Along that side? That's the, that's where the loading dock is?
It's not a loading dock, it's just a garage door.
You mentioned the loading dock.
I, I, loading, it's, it's not a, it's not a situation where you have a dock seventy-four feet above grade, it's just a, a paved into a garage door. If I use loading dock, it's a.
Where will these tractor trails be coming in?
I don't think they're tractor trailer. We're not, this site's too small to handle tractor trailer.
I thought tractor trails would be turning into the stick.
No.
Like a box truck?
I think you're talking at, at best.
Box trucks, things like that?
Steak body truck, something like that.
Okay, cool. Um, the other thing is. I think the last time we were, uh, talking about this, the neighbors were here and stuff like that, were giving their comments. Um, have you thought about addressing any of their concerns in terms of noise or light pollution, that kind of thing?
When, when was their meeting?
There wasn't.
I thought there was. This is.
Donuts or something.
Oh, I thought it was this guy. Okay, no, that's fine. That's all I.
I have one more question. It's, uh, really something that Brian wrote, Brian Sodell, and it had to do with, with the actual construction material, the building itself, molding in with the rest of the neighborhood, because the other side of the street is all residential.
Right.
So, uh, when you finally do come back and you're looking for something, some kind of rendering or whatever, this thing's going to look like and what it's made of, if you appreciate it?
Okay.
Round the table one more time, anybody?
Piggyback on what you just said, Charlie, if there are any plans to change the side, the exterior, the existing structure, could you add that as well?
Yes.
Great. Oh, yeah, Charlie mentioned signage. Um, are you going to throw up something on three twenty-two to indicate what's there and who's, or had?
I, I, I don't know. Um, I'll, I'll have a discussion with my client on signage. I assume whatever signage looks up will have to be performance with your word.
Well, that, that brings up an interesting question. I haven't even thought about that. The actual property goes all the way back to three twenty-two?
To the right of way, yes.
All right, so can you put signage up in a, in that area?
I, I'm not sure.
You know, be interesting.
Well, doesn't the beautification or whatever that, if, that it upgrade to three twenty-two would not affect any decision to?
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I don't know whether because of not being able to build in that area or improve that area or whatnot, to put signage up there would be kind of improving or building in that area. Logically, it seems like you couldn't do it. But, you know, I'm thinking if I'm the, the guy that owns the tradesman shop, I'd like, I'd like to have some kind of coming down three twenty-two saying, by the way, if you, if you need your horseshoe or something over here, this is where I am. All right, well, Matt, Alex, you good? All right, well, Matt, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. We'll go back and make adjustments to plan and try to answer the questions we had. Back to you here next month or the month following that.
Very good, thank you very much.
Happy, uh, next item on, here is the heart and soul update.
Yeah, so the heart and soul, uh, action report is complete, and the next step is to present to the board of commissioners, uh, as a resolution, and that will happen at the next board of commissioners meeting.
Okay, thank you, Joe. I don't know if we discussed that. Our annual report has been submitted. The next item up here is the annual report status update. And as far as I'm concerned, George, has that, has it not been submitted? Okay. Okay, I, I thought we had resolved that in a prior meeting back in March, but nevertheless, okay. But one of the things that we need to be thinking about is, uh, putting together an annual report committee earlier in the year than we did in the past. So I think in the next meeting, we might want to think about putting a couple people on the annual report committees and trying to keep that current as we go through the year, so that we don't have to do a lot of catching up, or reimagining what we did, going through minutes and things like that. So I think, I'd like to see us, if possible, put a little committee together for our next annual report. Uh, next order of business is other. Anybody have anything they'd like to bring up? And we'll go start with Cindy. Didn't you want to say something about, uh? No, no, you wanted to say something about markers, but you also wanted to say something about, uh. Well, the, the planning, not the planning commission, historical societies. Now, that's where other information is. I thought that'd be a good place to talk about.
The developer for forty-eight hundred Cheychester Avenue, we never said hand and claw, did, um, have a call, a virtual call with the board of the Cheychester Historical Society to talk about the plans for the house and the barn. And, um, the board came up with a list of what called the recommendations or preferences. Uh, do you want to do a copy?
Yeah, just pass out a copy to everybody. And this is just for your information as to what the actual discussion was with the historical society. And it's basically what the historical society would like to see, all right, the rest of it really belongs to, between the developer and, uh, and the township as far as what actually occurs.
They asked us for our thoughts with respect to the whole, what will happen when the demolition, demolition delay ordinance permit is submitted. Um, and they asked us, you know, if they could accommodate us, if we would support their, um, the demolition permit at that time. But number one in order, preference was to relocate the east wrist, the east wrist on Cheychester Avenue, and adjust the size of the warehouse to allow the horse, the house and the barn to remain in the current location. A second was to relocate the house and the barn on the site. They proposed relocating the house, but demolishing the barn. And third was relocate the house, dismantle the barn and move it to another location, somewhere, you know, in the township or where someone would see value in keeping the building. And fourth would be to relocate the house on the site and dismantle the barn, reuse elements where possible as access to us, if you want to export change. This is pretty much what they have to propose. Um, and then, uh, included in all of these requests, we were asking for funding for the rehabilitation and long-term maintenance of the buildings, um, dedicated access to parking if that building, those buildings are going to be used by third parties, using the names Middleton, which was the original plantation name when William Penn issued the land grant, Markin from the South Hill Markin Times, and to install interpretive, interpretive signage.
Okay, so, so this information had been shared and discussed with the developer. It's also been shared and discussed with township. The developer and the township are talking about it as far as what accommodations may or may not be acceptable and what, and whatnot. Uh, the developer will react to those comments and come back in a later time with their proposal, and will consider it at that time.
Just for the record, we have not responded yet to the, to the board.
Dan, you had something, or you just, okay.
You didn't, you just sent this to them? You didn't have a face-to-face with them on this, or?
We did have the face-to-face. I don't remember the last name. Max, who's a, Allied Properties and lawyers, Rob. We did.
Did they seem partial to any one particular, uh?
We started out with the meeting, and after they proposed what they want to do, which is keep the, the house relocated on the site, and they offered the option to dismantle the barn and use some of those elements, the architectural, uh, elements in construction of the warehouse.
I think they did mention that they would, they would think about incorporating some of the wood or something into, into whatever they, they might do. But again, this is just for information purposes and whatnot as to what was discussed with, I keep saying planning commission, the historical society and, uh, and the developer. And I thought it would be a good idea that you guys had a copy of, of that ahead of time. And so when the developer comes back in, they'll have their interpretation of what they'd like to do, and they'll share it with us.
We submitted this after call. We had again four, every call, came up with interpretations, submitted them, and we have to. interpretations, submitted them, and we have not heard back.
Okay. Now Cindy, you had?
So you're aware that Middleton had slaves on his plantation?
This property was owned by Walter Martin.
Yeah. I mean, I Googled it right now and the history of the Middleton name is associated with plantation that had 800 slaves.
Here in Upper Cheyenne Township, because I don't have any record of that myself, Greg, if you're, you know, if that's true, then certainly you wouldn't want to, you wouldn't want to use that name.
Yeah.
He was not a Quaker. Most of the Quakers were abolitionists, uh, but he was not.
I mean, I could pass this to you and take a look at it if you like. Yes, because you couldn't have that. I mean, if you're going to have that name, then you'd have to have a big plant of plaque on it saying, hey, here was a place where we had 800 humans enslaved.
And that's part of the interpretive signage is to share that history and, you know.
The other, the other point that, uh, you wanted to bring up is you did have a couple of historical, uh, markers that you wanted to, to, uh, share with the planning commission from a standpoint of something that, uh, you'd like to see happen within the township?
Yeah. So, um, currently.
And when I, when I say you, I mean, the historical society. I wasn't speaking Cindy when, well, maybe you do, but.
Uh, we currently have two redign markers. One is at the intersection of Cheyenne Avenue and the Broad. It's a double-sided marker. One side of that's the, um, formation of the township, for Cheyenne Township. The other side talks about the Kay's Bill, which predates the name of Quinn. The second marker is located at the Friends Meeting House, was installed in celebration of the 250th anniversary of the, the meeting house. These next two are historic sites on Cheyenne Avenue. One is the DeKay Avenue School, which is now PRL, National Insurance Agency. It was the first public school in the township built in 267. So it's an historic resource. The second one is Memorial Presbyterian Church on Cheyenne Avenue across from World Drive. The church in Lance, uh, date back to 1855. So they are next to the Friends Meeting House, some of the oldest buildings in the township. What we propose more than it's markers, the marker was privately funded. The second one was funded by the township and, uh, the record of ownership occurs for three years.
Any other items under other that anybody would like to bring up?
At this point, it would just be, uh, general progress is still being made on the definition section and the, uh, the organization of the chapters. I'll circle back with that group again and see where we're at and see what we can get together. Uh, I mean, in speaking with other municipalities that did Sado rewrites three to five years with, uh, typically with like a, you know, a consulting contract. So I would say that, um, in general, this project's going to be a multi-year project. Um, I think from the perspective of being able to get that outline, which is what's going to direct kind of where everything goes. Um, we've got some planning activities in June that we're trying to get through and a zoning change we're going to go through the summer that's kind of taken a little bit of priority away on the planner's side. Um, so I'd say it's something probably we'll come back to in the fall.
Greg?
No, I'm good.
Next order of business would be general couple of comments. No one is in quite presently in. Current procedures. Right here?
Good.